Alderman Bukavich?
Here.
Verhaelen?
Here.
Toman?
Here.
Gale?
Here.
Alderman Guzekowski is excused this evening.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item three is approval of the minutes of June 21st, 2016. Need a motion?
Bukavich will make a motion to approve the minutes of 6:21:16.
Go second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kirkhouse, I'm sorry, Bukavich?
Aye.
All right, under recognition, item four is a consideration of resolution number 11720-071916. It's a resolution of commendation to Dean A. Marari, retiring firefighter. Catherine?
Resolution 11720-071916, resolution of commendation to Dean A. Marari. Whereas Dean has retired from his position as a firefighter effective June 21st, 2016, after seventeen years and ten months of dedicated, full-time service to the City of Oak Creek Fire Department. And whereas Dean has been an emergency medical technician in the state of Wisconsin and during his career, his career cared for numerous people who were sick or injured at all times of day while delivering caring and skilled emergency care to them. And whereas Dean responded to many major alarms utilizing his skills in firefighting, rescue, and dedication to his team. And whereas Dean frequently conducted tours and participated in fire prevention activities for the children of Oak Creek during his career. And whereas Dean contributed his efforts to input significant amount of data into the department's records management system to aid with the development of automated unit dispatching. And now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Dean for his many years of dedicated and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the fire department. That the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Dean A. Marari and his family on his retirement. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Dean A. Marari, passed and adopted this nineteenth day of July, 2016.
Thank you Catherine. Congratulations Dean on his retirement. Need a motion?
Gale will move to approve resolution 11720-071916, a resolution of commendation to Dean A. Marari, retiring firefighter.
Bukavich will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Item five is a council proclamation entitled number 1614 to Rebecca Vanderbeck for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Traffic and Safety Commission. I will read that council proclamation. It's to Rebecca Vanderbeck for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Traffic and Safety Commission. Whereas Rebecca Vanderbeck was appointed to Traffic and Safety Commission on August 3rd, 2015 and served for one year. And whereas Rebecca Vanderbeck has resigned from the Traffic and Safety Commission effective July, 2016. And whereas Rebecca Vanderbeck has served the city in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Rebecca Vanderbeck for her dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Traffic and Safety Commission. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Rebecca Vanderbeck, introduced and adopted this nineteenth day of July, 2016. As I say to all of our volunteers who step up for our committees and commissions, thanks for stepping up and doing the right thing and helping us out because it does a lot of valuable, valuable work all the different ways for the city. So appreciate that. Need a motion and a second.
Gale will move to approve council proclamation number 16-14 to Rebecca Vanderbeck for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Traffic and Safety Commission.
Bukavich will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Moving to public hearings, first of four. Item six is a rezone and a conditional use request by Brent Wampler, Custom Facilities and Boylan Properties, Oak Creek LLC. To rezon the properties at 7008 and 7018 South 27th Street and 2500 West Rossin Avenue from B2 Community Business, B3 Office and Professional Business, RS4 Single Family Residential, and RD1 Two Family Residential to B4 Highway Business excluding RR Regional Retail Overlay District with a conditional use permit for automobile sales and service and a car wash in the second district. City clerk will not read the public hearing notice.
Public hearing number one is a hearing to consider a request by Brent Wampler, Custom Facilities and Boylan Properties, Oak Creek LLC to rezon the properties at 7008 and 7018 South 27th Street and 2500 West Rossin Avenue from B2 Community Business, B3 Office and Professional Business, RS4 Single Family Residential, and RD1 Two Family Residential to B4 Highway Business excluding RR Regional Retail Overlay District with a conditional use permit for automobile sales and service and a car wash. Applicant is Brent Wampler, Custom Facilities and Boylan Properties, Oak Creek LLC. Property owner is Boylan Properties, Oak Creek LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is June 23rd, 2016.
Doug Seymour?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I am the Director of Community Development for the city of Oak Creek. And this is the first of our public hearings this evening is on a request to rezon the properties at 7008 and 7018 South 27th Street and 2500 West Rossin Avenue to B4 Highway Business with a conditional use permit for automobile sales and service as well as an accessory use of a car wash. If we could switch the graphic, please. Now according to the comprehensive plan, this area has been identified for planned business along 27th Street. There also is a smaller portion as you go east towards the subdivision that is unidentified for two-family or townhouse residential. This area is also part of the 27th Street corridor plan that was completed in partnership with the city of Franklin in 2007, which also has additional design guidelines which apply to development within these properties. Now automotive dealerships do require a conditional use permit under the requirements of this overlay district. Just for your information, you did receive a copy of that overlay district as part of your packet. Now it is anticipated that approximately 200 new and used vehicles would be on display for purchase, which projects to a monthly sales of about 100 to 130. Based on those projections, applicants are projecting approximately 10 customers per day during the week and 20 to 25 customers on Saturdays. There would additionally be 15 to 20 retail parts customers and 35 to 45 service customers per day. That would result in an estimated 35 to 40 full-time employees with some additional employees, part-time employees at hourly rates. Now preliminary site plans have been provided as part of the conditional use. Kind of see those here just to orient you and folks in the audience and I'll do the same for the council. 27th Street is on your north and south. Rossin Avenue is on your east and west. A certified survey map would be required to combine these three different properties and that would occur at a later date. However, council should be aware of just a few items that were discussed as part of the plan commission discussion regarding the conditional use permit. And those were with respect to some of the design features of the 27th Street overlay districts and the difficulties that the applicant is facing when trying to design some of those standards. And we've talked about that a little bit and I can't get into great detail, but there are some heightened design standards which are proving to be difficult to implement, not only in this property but throughout the corridor. One other thing which I'd like to bring to your attention is the presence of officially mapped streets. And as you can see on this exhibit, there are officially mapped streets which affect the property. Roughly, there was a roadway back when the 27th Street corridor plan and the reconstruction was being designed. The Wisconsin Department of Transportation suggested a connecting road between Riverwood Drive on 27th Street and Rossin Avenue, which would have followed roughly the route that you see in black here. The existing official map for that district does show a street roughly in this location, although not exactly. But that provides additional access to the properties to the east. So while we have two different proposed road configurations, the one that exists right now does not line up with the proposed and the preferred alternative providing this alternative means of access to 27th Street. Typically, when we do development, we do land divisions and we require development agreements, we require the dedication and improvement of the officially mapped streets within this property. And at the plan commission level, when they discussed this proposed rezoning and conditional use, there was substantial discussion regarding the need to dedicate and improve at least portions of this property. And the applicant is aware of that and those discussions are continuing to take place and those will be ironed out as we move forward with the development agreement process. There are wetlands on this property. They are identified as part of the site plans that have been submitted. And just important to note that you are not approving a site plan per se as part of this as part of this conditional use permit application. The actual detailed site and plans, site and building plans would still need to come back to the plan commission for that site and building plan approval at a later date.
Are you flipping the screens for some reason?
I'm trying to get to a site plan and sure the show us the wetlands, but we don't have that one on there. So in essence, the plan commission has reviewed the proposed rezoning and conditional use request and they have recommended council approval of the following. To rezon the properties at 7008, 7018, South 27th Street from B2 Community Business and B3 Office and Professional Business to B4 Highway Business. Also rezoning portions of the property at 2500 West Rossin Avenue from RS4 and RD1 to B4 Highway Business and the granting of a conditional use permit for automobile sales and service with an accessory use for a car wash on those same properties. This is a public hearing. I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed rezoning and conditional use permit to please approach the microphone. If you have not filled out an appearance slip already, please do so. Hand that into the city clerk and when your name is called, proceed to address your comments or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
I'll make three calls for public comment on this item. First call. Second call. Third and final call for public comment on item number six. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing with item seven, which is discussion of the ordinance, number 2813. Open it up for council discussion. Questions or comments? Alderman Verhaelen?
Just looking through the paperwork background, what was the final resolution on that Riverwood extension?
Actually, there was no resolution. I mean, we are still continuing to work with staff and the plan commission and recognizing that we didn't necessarily need to come up with a final resolution at this point, but we'll continue to work with the applicant and with staff to identify the proper extent and whether or not the council will require that via development agreement, it will be a decision that is deferred to a later date.
Alderman Bukavich?
Just a couple of comments. I did have some, a couple of residents come back at us and question why the rezoning's going on. Again, this does fit the 27th Street plan. We felt it was an appropriate use on a property that's been sitting vacant for quite some time. Looks like a good opportunity to bring another amenity to Oak Creek that does not currently exist. So we are looking forward to it. As far as the road goes, Doug kind of explained that it's kind of a work in progress. We didn't feel the need to put the developer at cost to put this entire road in or pay for the improvements if it never goes through. So the mayor did come up with one, I thought, very nice improvement to it. And on the access road, he asked that we actually combine where the road outlet possibly would be with the entrance off Rossin Avenue. And it would save some money down the way. So hopefully staff's still working at that. With that, that's about the only thing I heard and it was really just from one resident. Other than that, people have been pretty supportive about it that have heard about this coming through, so.
Questions? Motion on seven.
Bukavich will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2813 to rezon the properties at 7008 and 7018 South 27th Street from B2 Community Business and B3 Office and Professional Business to B4 Highway Business excluding the regional retail overlay district and the 2500 West Rossin Avenue from RS4 Single Family Residential and RD1 Two Family Residential to B4 Highway Business excluding the regional retail overlay district with a conditional use for an automobile sales and service car wash on these three properties.
Allen seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Moving on to our next public hearing, it's item number eight. It's a rezon and conditional use request by Kelly Gallagher, Self Storage Ventures LLC to rezon the properties at 6304 and 6340 South Howell Avenue and 137147 and 209 East College Avenue from B4 Highway Business to M1 Manufacturing with a conditional use permit for a self-storage facility, mini warehousing in the first district. Catherine?
Public hearing number two is to consider a request by Kelly Gallagher, Self Storage Ventures LLC to rezon the properties at 6304 and 6340 South Howell Avenue and 137147 and 209 East College Avenue from B4 Highway Business to M1 Manufacturing with a conditional use permit for a self-storage facility, mini warehousing. Applicant is Kelly Gallagher, Self Storage Ventures LLC. Property owner is LaSalle 115 Holdings LLC, series six WI. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is June 23rd, 2016.
Doug, thank you. Council will recall that these properties were the subject of a request to amend the comprehensive plan that was taken up by the council at their June 7th meeting and that it was actually a change from a planned business to a planned industrial classification. The proposal now to rezon in accordance with the comprehensive plan includes a proposal for two climate-controlled buildings. Now I'll show this on the site plan that we have up on the screen right now. Rotate that. College Avenue would be on this access and Howell Avenue here, so north would be facing the council here. So you have two of the climate-controlled storage buildings and six single-story, which would be cold storage buildings that are proposed for the site. Again, although a concept plan is being proposed as part of this conditional use permit request, rezoning and conditional use permit request, the council is not approving a site plan at this point. That is the purview of the plan commission and will occur at a later date. Council will also notice the presence of a substantial wetland area within the site, which has been further delineated. That has presented some challenges with respect to a development of the site previously and also some challenges with respect to the layout of the site plan, but the staff is working with the applicants to make sure that whatever develops is in accordance with the wetlands as may be mitigated by the Department of Natural Resources. The plan commission has reviewed this request and after considerable discussion, they have recommended approval of this rezoning and conditional use permit request, which includes the attached conditions and restrictions. This is a public hearing. Again, anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to rezon these properties to M1 Manufacturing with a conditional use permits for self-storage without outdoor storage or display, please fill out an appearance card, hand that to the city clerk. When your name is called, please proceed to address the common council with your questions and or comments. This public hearing is now open.
First call for public comment on item number eight. Second call. Third and final call for public comment on item eight. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing, move to item nine, which is a consideration of ordinance number 2814 approving the rezoning of the properties at 6304 and 6340 South Howell Avenue and 137147 and 209 East College Avenue with B4 Highway Business to M1 Manufacturing with a conditional use for a self-storage facility without outdoor storage or display, without outdoor storage or display in the first district and open up to the council. Alderman Bukavich?
Just a little comment from the planning commission. We kind of went round and round with this one quite a bit because it was a rezone and we had a choice to do it specifically to this property and amend the comprehensive plan or do it citywide. And we really felt it prudent, given the challenges on this property, to amend the comprehensive plan for this particular parcel. We think it's an appropriate use for it, given the challenges. We think it'll be very beneficial as a gateway to the city, particularly even though it's not an issue here as you see the design of the building. It doesn't look like your typical storage facility. So I just want to give some insight as to that. We just kind of don't willy-nilly go around rezoning like that, but we really felt it was an appropriate use at this point in time. Staff, staff had a lot of input into this and there was a lot of discussion within planning as to what to do with this, but the consensus was it's good for the city, it's good for the community, so we did move it forward.
I'd echo what Alderman Bukavich said. We had a lot of discussion on the plan commission, which I chair. It is a challenging property and I think one of the cool things is the applicant was willing to work with us on that welcome area, kind of on the front eastern side, northeastern side of that property. I think when I see that kind of willingness to cooperate and to understand what our needs might be on a property like that, especially one that is the gateway on the north side of the city, that shows them that you're willing to be a partner with us and you want to be here for a while. So as Alderman Bukavich said, not your typical storage site look, and it looks great, it's functional, it actually meets the airport kind of needs that you would see around an airport or at least the building looks. So I think it's a great use of a challenging property and I fully support it. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, motion on nine.
Bukavich will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2814 approving the rezoning of the properties at 6304 and 6340 South Howell Avenue and 137147 and 209 East College Avenue from B4 Highway Business to M1 Manufacturing with a conditional use for a self-storage facility without outdoor storage or display.
Allen seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Just to be consistent, I'll vote no on that.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
All right, moving to item 10, the third public hearing of four. It's a conditional use amendment request by John Kazer, Cave Enterprises LLC to amend the existing conditional use permit affecting the property at 8081 South Howell Avenue in the second district. City clerk?
Public hearing number three is a hearing to consider a request by John Kazer, Cave Enterprises LLC to amend the existing conditional use permit affecting the property at 8081 South Howell Avenue. Applicant is John Kazer, Cave Enterprises LLC. Property owner, Howell Oaks 3 LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is June 23rd, 2016.
Thank you. At their meeting of June 14th, the plan commission recommended the common council approval of amendments to this conditional use permit for the property at 8081 South Howell Avenue in anticipation of the conversion of the existing Sonic Driving Restaurant to a Burger King Restaurant. Based on the information provided by the applicant, the existing building will remain. However, the proposal is to construct an additional area for interior dining space for capacity of 66 persons. And for those of you who are familiar with Sonic, I mean, they have no interior dining whatsoever at the present facility. Currently, there are 36 parking stalls that actually would be reduced somewhat to 33. Essentially, it's taking the conditions and restrictions which were adopted for Sonic and adopting them to the operational plan for Burger King. And the major changes to that were that it updated the current layout and the language and the condition restrictions, updated the legal description, it removed the restriction on hours of operation, it removed the building height, area, and other standard sections, it updated the time of compliance section of the current core requirements, and it removed the reuse of property provision in that. You recall that when the Sonic restaurant was first approved, there was some concern expressed about the longevity of that type of use and that's why we had some certain requirements with respect to reuse of the property in the event that the use would turn over and in fact it has. The new conditional use permit is more reflective of the conditions and restrictions for quick-service restaurants along the corridor and the plan commission has recommended their approval. With that in mind, I will ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to amend the conditional use permit for the property at 8081 South Howell Avenue, please fill out an appearance form. When your name is called, please approach the microphone, address your comments or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
I'll make three calls for public comment. First call. Second call. I have a comment form from John Kazer. Do you wish to speak? Come forward. Name and address for the record.
John Kazer with Cave Enterprises, 1624 West 18th Street, Chicago, Illinois. I just wanted to speak to the elevations that were presented in the drawing and I got some late feedback from the corporation, the architecture department regarding the elevations and the facade and I apologize to Mr. Seymour that I hadn't discussed it with him yet because it was something that came up in my review with them prior to this meeting. But they recommended that we propose a revision to the elevations such that the stone facade that is shown, do you have the?
And actually, this is not an approval, review of site and building plans, this is approval of the conditional use permit.
Oh, thank you.
So we're not necessarily approving those, but if there are any standards in the conditions or restrictions which impact your ability to deliver the building that your corporate is proposing, certainly we can discuss those. But this body would not be charged with actually approving your site or building plans, that would be the plan commission.
And for you and any other applicant that comes forward, this is not the time to dump changes on us at the meeting, at the live meeting.
No, I understand.
We don't have time to review them. Staff has to look at everything, make sure it meets all of our codes and
Right.
So.
I'm back.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Third and final call for public comment on this item. At this point, I'll close the public hearing, move to discussion of item number 10, which is item 11. It's a consideration of ordinance number 2815, amending the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 2550 for Cave Enterprises LLC for conditional use permit for a restaurant with drive-through facility located at 8081 South Howell Avenue in the second district. Open it up to the council for questions or comments. Alderman Bukavich?
Just a quick comment. It is unfortunate that Sonic could not find a hold here and find a market and conduct business here. It is unfortunate, but it's really a testament that as they go out, Oak Creek's that marketable that somebody stepped right in and took over the building. And this isn't the first case we've had. It really speaks to our reputation throughout the area as a marketing place and that businesses want to come here. So again, as a negative happens, there's a positive for the city going forward and I think that says a lot about our city and where we're at.
Alderman Gale?
Doug, I see it's part of the package here. Are we going to be able to reinforce our landscaping standards on the property once it goes through its reconfiguration?
Certainly. I mean, as part of the plan commission's review of site and building plans, a detailed landscaping plan is also required, recognizing of course that certainly some of those areas have kind of fallen into
Look a little tired.
Lack of maintenance with respect to the current ownership. I fully expect that with a new corporate owner that they'd take advantage of the opportunity to present a fresh face to the community and maintain the landscaping in an appropriate manner.
Good to hear.
Part of my research, I had a Burger King hamburger on Saturday and it was very good. So the quality's still there. You know, we told Sonic when they, I was at Alderman and they came forward, we said, "You sure you don't want to put a dining room in?" That wasn't part of their philosophy at the time, but I'm glad that as Alderman Bukavich said, we don't sit on empty properties very long. You can see it all over the city, but this is just another example. It's a great company and I look forward to having them in that space. Any other questions or comments? Motion on 11.
Bukavich will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2815, amending the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 2550 for Cave Enterprise LLC for a conditional use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through facility located at 8081 South Howell Avenue.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
And our fourth and final public hearing is for item number 12, which is a conditional use request by Joe Frederick and Brian Schoenlieber, Humble Habitat LLC for conditional use permit for a community-based residential facility, CBRF, with a capacity of at least nine but no more than 20 beds on the property at 7801 South Pennsylvania Avenue in the first district. City clerk?
Public hearing number four is to consider a request submitted by Joe Frederick and Brian Schoenlieber, Humble Habitat LLC for a conditional use permit for a community-based residential facility with a capacity of at least nine but no more than 20 beds on the property at 7801 South Pennsylvania Avenue. Applicant is Joe Frederick and Brian Schoenlieber. Property owner is Joe Frederick. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is June 16th, 2016.
Thank you. At their May 24th meeting, the plan commission recommended a council approval of a conditional use permit for a CBRF, community-based residential facility with a maximum capacity of 20 beds and 10 rooms located at 7801 South Pennsylvania Avenue. Per section 170305, C2 of the code, licensed community living arrangements with a capacity between nine and 20 persons are considered a conditional use in residential zoning districts. And this property has been part of a area identified for single-family residential as compared to the comprehensive plan. The current operational plans do call for one care employee onsite per eight-hour shift with two-hour managers that will be on call as needed, or as needed, excuse me, but the facility would have one employee onsite at all times, 24/7. As proposed, no residential use permit for the property. onsite at all times, 24/7. As proposed, no residents of the facility will be able to drive. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a reduction in the required number of parking stalls. This would be addressed by the planning commission at the site plan review stage. Throughout the review of this proposal, staff had expressed some concern that the proposed use, at least as proposed on the concept plan which presented to us, was significantly large, larger than the, that was, uh, allowed through the buildable area of the property, uh, given that the majority of the site does contain wetlands. So this ultimately may require modifications to the size and orientation of the building at plan review stage. Uh, the proposed building, for example, is set back one-half of one foot. Only delineated wetland is illustrated on the CSM, so therefore the foundation for the building may encroach into that wetland, which should not be permitted. The applicant is working and continues to work with the DNR and staff on clarification as to exactly what the standard is with respect to wetland buffers and what is and what is not allowed, uh, with respect to construction within or adjacent to wetlands. But, uh, that being said, the planning commission has recommended approval of this conditional use permit for a CBRF with a maximum capacity of 20 beds located at 7801 South Pennsylvania Avenue. And this is a public hearing, and anyone who has any questions regarding the proposal for this conditional use for the CBRF, uh, please, again, fill out an appearance form. When your name is called, please proceed to address your comments and our questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Make three calls for public comment on item 12. First call. Second call. Third and final call. Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing of item 12. Move to item 13, which is discussion of ordinance number 2816, approving a conditional use permit for property at 7801 South Pennsylvania Avenue for a community-based residential facility, CBRF, with a capacity of at least nine but no more than 20 persons in the first district. Open up the council. Questions or comments? Anything up here?
Just one question. Uh, may, it may be a little, uh, too soon to ask this question, but, um, for the entrance and exits, it, uh, how far away are they from the intersection?
I don't have that specific information. I can give you a rough, rough number. There is, it's off the corner somewhat, so it's not immediately on the corner. I mean, it would be maintaining whatever safe distances are prescribed by our, uh, driveway, our traffic and safety code.
Yeah, I, I realize that there's not a, not gonna be a lot of traffic coming in out of this facility because it's relatively small, kind of like a small residence, but, um, just making sure that the driveway is kept as far to the north as possible.
Our core requirement is 50 feet. It would exceed that.
Good enough.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Motion on 13.
Gale will move to prove ordinance 2816, approving a conditional use permit for the property at 7801 South Pennsylvania Avenue for a community-based residential facility with a capacity of at least nine but no more than 20 persons.
Kavitch will second.
Ball call.
Alderman for Halen?
Aye.
Tolman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kavitch?
Aye.
Moving on to a presentation. It's by Ted Johnson, Director of Streets, Parks and Forestry, on the BSNA Citizen Request for Action Module. Welcome, Ted.
Uh, thank you. Um, as soon as it comes up. Okay, there we go. About the time, uh, we had purchased a module for, uh, the work order management system for, uh, the street, uh, parks and forestry department, uh, one of the things that we kind of committed to do was to, uh, get an online, um, portal for, uh, citizens to, to, uh, be able to put in requests for different services that the city offers. Uh, so basically they could do this at any time of day or night without having to worry about, uh, getting a busy signal or, or the office being closed. So, uh, we recently, um, implemented this, uh, put it together. I've been working with Leslie Flynn, um, and we're gonna have a, a link to this on our, uh, on our homepage for, for the Oak Creek, uh, website and, uh, probably on the, the Streets, Parks and Forestry page and possibly in a few other locations. Uh, so what this does is it allows, like I said, the citizens to, uh, put in a request for services. Uh, so when they click on the link, what they'll, what they'll come up to is this, uh, this piece right here, and they'll click on create a new request. So, uh, from there, they will get a dropdown menu of different, uh, different requests that they can make. And each one of these areas, uh, forestry, parks, street-related, has several items underneath it. So for instance, uh, this individual that will be looking at, put in a request, the inlet in front of his house or catch basin, uh, the concrete around it was starting to deteriorate and the frame was starting to kind of fall down into the, into the street. So, uh, he selected street-related requests and, uh, selected catch basins. And so from there, um, this is the top part of the screen that he'll see, and he's able to, um, uh, give us, uh, basically, uh, some information, some detail on what this individual saw, which is concrete around the sewer grade is caving in, causing it to sink. And, uh, then he gives us some information on, on where the location of it is. On the bottom part of the screen, uh, they actually give an opportunity for him to add some additional information. Uh, he says, "Well, it's not really in front of my house. It's 40 foot to the, uh, to the west of it."
Issue is spelled wrong in the checkbox.
It is spelled what?
Issue is spelled wrong.
Is it?
I-S-U-E is the... Issue.
Uh, so from there, uh, a kind of important part is, uh, do you want to receive updates? And this is when the resident can either say, "No, I, I don't want to, uh, to be bothered with email and/or somebody calling me or something like that. I just want the work done and, and move on." So they would check, uh, the box right here, which would say, "No, I wish to remain anonymous." Or they can select, which I have done in this one, that they wanted to receive updates, uh, give us their email address and their name, enter their, uh, their code so we know they're not a robot, and then hit submit. From there, it, it comes to us where we decide what action we want to take. In this particular case, we think that this warrants us to go out and do an inspection. So, uh, from there, we would, uh, go take a look at this. In this particular case, uh, we inspected the catch basin and, and yes, indeed, uh, there was a problem with it. It was developing a hole in the road. And then I went on to, uh, leave some additional information for the concrete crew about ordering some more supplies, things like that, which I didn't necessarily know is how, whoops, how, uh, that would be too useful for the resident. So I highlighted a section, uh, and clicked on that where it's got the red circle, and basically that will, uh, become visible to the public if they go back to look at this. And then, uh, click the bottom, uh, one to create a work order for this. Uh, we filled out the work order piece, developed a work order, uh, sent it to the crews to schedule it and gave it to the crews to do the work. Um, this is what the resident will actually receive after they hit submit, which is an email saying that, uh, that we have received your request, and it gives them a request code number. And the reason I have an arrow on that is because that's actually important for them if they want to take a look and see what exactly is going on with their request. So, um, they take that request code and they put it back where that link was, and they put, uh, look up request with their request code, and they will come to this page. And this is kind of far out there that you can't see very well, so I zoomed in it for, for you. And basically, this is that bottom piece that circled in red, and this will actually show them any of the, the things that have been done, uh, to their request. In the bottom part, it, it shows an inspection. It shows what they had put in their request. It shows the date that it was put in, uh, the date we scheduled it, the date we completed it, and actually the resolution that circled, uh, I'll show you on the next slide. They can click on that and get comments from what we put in there for what we have done. Now, this particular one, uh, shows a work order that we had put in, uh, for it. And this, in this case, it shows it's completed, uh, at any given time. It may say pending or in progress. Um, this particular one, I just completed it. So, uh, but, um, so they would go and if they clicked on the resolution, they would show, like we showed in the other, you know, what happened. They could see, uh, any of the steps that occurred. Like I said, in some, there's multiple steps under the request thing. For instance, for a weed commissioner complaint, there'd be an inspection, a notification letter, a re-inspection, and then a work order. So they would see it go through the steps as, uh... So, um, when the, when the work order was completed, uh, they would receive a, a notice basically telling them that their, the, their request had been resolved. And, um, if they had any other questions or comments, they could certainly feel free to, um, either give us a call or to, uh, send us back an email through this and, and let us know either it wasn't or was to their satisfaction. So I, and then basically that's kind of about it for this. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very nice, Ted. Any questions? Alderman Gale?
Ted, uh, with the, um, I see we're collecting the, the required fields as the address for the resident. Is it, are the aldermen of the districts gonna get some kind of notice that these things are being fed through? Typically, a lot of this, especially up here, would, would come through an alderman currently.
Well, um, what I've been doing, and I've done it to, uh, one or two of these, uh, actually it was to Chris Kuzikowski, who had put in, I had put his email address in. So when I have received ones from aldermen, I've been trying to put their email address in there so that they receive these. Uh, at first, uh, it was a little confusing. I think now that we've gone through this, you'll understand why you would receive that thing. But if I do get a request from an alderman for this, I would definitely use your email address.
I'm talking other, other citizens in our districts, really.
Are you talking on the front end, so when they submit it, the alderman's immediately notified? Any potential to do that?
Um, you know, the only way that we could do that is...
Is there a CC option on there somewhere, Leslie?
Unfortunately, no. Uh, I, I could actually ask to see if we could modify the program, but right now they do not have...
Plus it doesn't add a ton of cost. City administrator?
A couple of things on that. We'll, we'll look into that in, that's a, an interesting, um, option for us to pursue. Uh, this is gonna go live August 1st. So this will be available to the public August 1st. We want to make sure the council is aware of it. Um, all of this information can get aggregated in the management report. So we're gonna be able to quantify all of this information, be able to sort it by areas and districts, uh, which is going to help with the management of the items. We're going to go to more database management so that we have it. Right now, difficult for us to compile all of this. As you can imagine, all of this is going in. We can sort and report great stuff, uh, in terms of those report formats. So we want to make sure the council's aware of this. Ted did a little presentation to our department heads a couple of weeks ago, and, um, you know, we've been, uh, sorting through the issues with the staff that's gonna be taking the calls here, and, uh, we're happy with this module. We think it's gonna be a, a real improvement. Um, ultimately down the road, you haven't asked the question, but can I do this with a, um, an app on my phone and so forth? Not now. We gotta walk before we run, but potentially later, maybe different vendor. Uh, so, uh, that's potentially out there, but not, not in this rollout.
We have a organized...
Hold on one second. You done?
Just, obviously, we have an organized plan to get information out for...
We do.
Alderman for Halen?
Uh, just kind of piggybacking on, on Ted's comment. Um, say for instance, a resident, um, puts something on here and requests, uh, stop and go lights on a corner of 13th Street, for instance, and it's something that really can't be accomplished through streets. At that point in time, um, do you reroute that request through the alderman or through, uh, engineering or, or just tell them that, "Hey, we, we, we don't have the funds to do anything." Like, it's gotta go through a certain city, bunch of city channels to get something this big finished. How, how do you deal with something like that?
Well, first, um, even by submitting this, they would see their, um, their request code. So even if they remained anonymous, they would get a request code. What we would do is we would, um, take that request and we would, we would send it to traffic and safety, but so the individual wouldn't be in the dark. Um, we would put in, uh, before we closed the request, uh, we would put in the box that was viewable to the public that, um, we're unable to fulfill this request. It has been brought to the traffic and safety committee for further review, or something along those lines, so that they would know that, um, we didn't just dump the request, that we moved it to the appropriate people.
Anyone else? Great work, Ted. Uh, we don't need a motion, so thanks for that.
Thank you.
All right, gonna mix it up a little bit. We're gonna move to item 25, which is under community development. I'll let everybody scramble their papers. It's a discussion of resolution number 11723-071916, creating, describing, and making certain findings and approving the project plan for tax incremental district... Is that our phone? Tax incremental district number 12, the district in the second district. And handing it off to Doug Seymour.
Sir. Thank you. As, as part of the considered development plans for the former agricultural property, uh, at 1830 Iowa West Drexel Avenue, uh, the tax incremental district number 12 is being proposed for, uh, adoption at this point by the common council through the creation resolution as part of resolution 11723. Uh, copies of the project plan and boundary map, which were initially reviewed by the joint review board at their first public meeting on June 1st, and by the planning commission at a public hearing held June 14th, are included as part of your packet. Uh, again, should the council adopt resolution 11723, the proposed district and project plan would be presented to the joint review board on July 20th or tomorrow. So the district is being formed. It's kind of a summary and, uh, not to go over all. We went through it at the public hearing, and you do have the minutes of the public hearing. And again, this is not a public hearing. This is an action by the common council. The district is being formed as a mixed-use district comprised of about 50 acres. Uh, the initial base value in 2016 was $10,700. Uh, it's anticipated that new development will be a mix of retail, residential and other commercial uses. Uh, the infrastructure, infrastructure for the district will be developed by the city, while the retail, residential and other commercial uses will be developed by the private sector, public-private partnerships or some combination thereof. Uh, just as a bit of history, the 50-acre property that which comprises the district, uh, was part of a land exchange that was, uh, completed between Falk Park and Milwaukee County Park, uh, that was in, back in 2011. The council also, a, a number of items has in relationship to the proposed TIF district. On May 17th of this year, adopted a resolution approving a finance development agreement with IKEA. Um, the significant terms of that were the city's issuance of a bond for water, sewer, roadway infrastructure to serve the project, uh, additional, uh, capacity for $25,000 in annual administrative costs payable to the city from IKEA, and that the remaining, and that's an important distinction, the remaining increment generated from the IKEA site only, that which remains after the principal and interest payment on the bond, as well as the $25,000 in administrative costs, would go back to them, uh, through 2036 or until $13 million is generated by that increment. Increment that is generated on other property within the district or the additional 20 acres would then be used to pay for other eligible project costs. Uh, so again, the planning commission did hold a public hearing on June 14th to consider the creation of the district and the adoption of the project plan. You do have those minutes. And after considering the comments made at that public hearing, the planning commission voted to adopt resolution 201602, which approved the proposed boundaries and the project plan for the district, and recommended to the council that they adopt a similar resolution to formally create the district and to approve its project plan in accordance with the provisions of tax increment law. Uh, the total estimated project cost of $20,756,139 would be paid through the additional increment generated by the district over the life of its district, which is estimated to be $21,943,102. I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments the, the council has at this point in time, but this is essentially the final step before this, the project plan and the creation of the district goes to the joint review board. Uh, and if that, the joint review board, should the council, uh, approve the resolution this evening, and should the joint review board approve their resolution tomorrow, this would be submitted to the Department of Revenue for the establishment of TID 12, having a base year or a base date of January 1, 2016.
Thank you, Doug. I'll, uh, open up the council for comments or questions, and I'll take several... I'll, uh, open up the council for comments or questions, and it'll take several very brief public comments on this item. Council. Alderman Givich.
Well, um, we've, we've heard a lot about this, Ted, going forward. We've had numerous public comments on it. We've vetted it through, and again, we, we feel it's a, a great addition to the city. Uh, we look forward to having it in. And again, in the long run, if you can really get up to that 30,000-foot level, um, it's gonna raise all boats in the area, so just wanted to make those comments. Nothing nobody hasn't heard before, but...
Okay. Alderman Gill.
Yeah, I echo Dan's comments. I mean, it's a good day for Oak Creek when this, uh, this particular action, this particular project will finally get its, uh, firm footing to move forward. Universal, basically, a claim for the fact that Oak Creek was able to, to get IKEA to commit to its first particular property in, in Wisconsin in Oak Creek, and it really will serve as a catalyst for the entire project and entire property for Northwest Mutual. This is formerly county park land, and we all know county park land is typically a, a vacuum of which land will never exit. So the fact that we were able to reuse this and put it into a significant, uh, a significantly commercial entity and a significant add to the city, I think is, uh, is an opportunity that we should take at, uh, at the earliest opportunity.
I echo both aldermen's comments. I, I actually, when I was writing the 4th of July parade, I actually had people saying thank you for IKEA, which trust me, has never, they never yelled those kind of things at me in the parade, so. And it wasn't because I was throwing candy. Um, so obviously, a huge day for the city. It's a, it's a company that, uh, we will be proud of, the state will be proud of. It's a tremendous coup for Oak Creek. I, I got my business journal in the paper, and it talks about from Oak Creek to Wauwato, to Greenfield, to Kenosha County, developers large and small enjoying a Class A environment, and they're talking about Oak Creek. They didn't talk about Oak Creek in that sense 10 years ago, and they are now. That's a big, big win for us, so. This time, I'll take a few very brief comments. This is not a public hearing. Oh, Alderman Tomlin, go ahead. Then we'll go to public comments.
I've, I've read the minutes of the, uh, planning commission meeting. Actually, I had to read them twice because they're pretty extensive. There's a lot of material there to digest. Um, first of all, I, I'd like to say that I respect the comments made by the public because too often, we sit here on big issues or medium issues or whatever, and this chamber's is empty, are empty. There's nobody here, so I appreciate all the comments that were made. Some of them were quite extensively researched. There was a lot of time and effort put behind them, so I'd just like to acknowledge that at this time. I do have a couple of questions about, um, on page 12 in our packet here. We outline the estimated project cost. The 13 million that, uh, is listed here is, uh, I don't know who wants to take this, if Jerry wants to take it, or is that based on the actual build-out value of what this building ends up, the size of this building? How does that work exactly? I want to make sure I understand that.
That's a number that we negotiated with, um, IKEA. Doug, in his opening comments indicated that, um, that is payable only if the increment is generated over the course of, um, the, uh, the project life, so I think that's 2032, uh, I'm not, I'm, 2036, I'm, I'm sorry.
36.
Um, the, um, there will be a question of whether they reach that number. So that's an increment that comes back to them after the bonds are paid and after the administrative fees are paid. If there's sufficient revenue left over to reach that number, uh, that's what it'll be.
Okay, but that number could be smaller?
It could be smaller. So if the district, um, ends in 2036 and they haven't reached that total number, it will be smaller.
Uh, the second...
And, and that's ultimately based on what the assessed value of the property is going to be.
Okay. Basically, based on the size of the building, right?
Right, and it's pretty hard to predict over a 20-year period how that's going to advance over time and precisely what those numbers are going to be.
Um, my second question is the, right underneath there is an extra $2 million listed as a development incentive.
Right.
Is, is that, that's not a number that we're locked into, that the incentive of, of anything built, being built after this would come back to council, and it, it's there if needed, is that...
That's correct, and that's commonly what we're doing in the TIF districts. We put unallocated or unidentified, um, uh, incentives. We've got property that extends in this district beyond the IKEA boundaries and what they would own. And, um, in every one of our districts that we've done, we've added unidentified, uh, incentives. We did that in TIF 8, which is the Oakview Business Park. We did that in TIF 11, which is here at Drexel Town Square, uh, to provide for the opportunity if there's something that we really want. Uh, there's, uh, in, in incentives that we need to get the right kind of mix that we're looking for. We have the ability to do that without amending the plan. So we are typically putting that in all of our project plans. We don't always use it, uh, but we do sometimes.
Although you would have the ability to do that, you could not do that without the adoption of a development agreement for that purpose.
Correct. There has to be specific, as Doug is indicating, there's specific parameters that comes in front of the council in terms of exactly what would occur.
Okay, that, that was a concern of mine because, uh, I don't want the public to get the impression that we're automatically throwing out incentives without, without vetting them totally, because the mayor has been concerned, the council's been concerned about this whole city being TIF'd as a, like, one big TIF, and that's, that's not our objective here. We vet every proposal in front of us. Everything is examined closely. We make sure the numbers make sense. We don't just throw out these incentives willy, willy-nilly, so. Uh, my third question is, uh, in respect to the state statute, the legal ground that we stand on, how solid is, maybe Melissa can speak to this, with the actual state statute, uh, on development of TID 12?
I can tell you that in terms of the resolution before you, Alderman Tomlin and the council, this is the resolution that creates, describes, and makes certain findings and approves the project plan if this is adopted by the council for TID 12. Uh, it's appropriate for the council to consider this resolution. Uh, it meets the legal requirements. We've conferred additionally with outside counsel, uh, in addition to our staff and myself. There has been an outside review of the project plan, an outside examination of the planning commission and common council proceedings in that regard. And with respect to the applicable provisions of the tax increment law, this is in compliance with statute. So we're comfortable with that. Uh, we're confident, um, with the findings before you in the resolution tonight and our recommendation as staff.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so as I said, this is not a public hearing, but I will allow some brief comments specific to this item. I'm interested in hearing your opinion, not, you don't represent anybody else, it's the individual speaking's opinion. Very brief. First up is Carol Grundy.
Hi, I'm Carol Grundy, and I live in Oak Creek on Nicholson Road. Um, my husband has been quite concerned about this IKEA deal. Uh, I believe I sent all of you an email on Sunday night, and I hope you got a chance to read it. It says, "Mayor and Alderman, the proposed TID number 12 and development agreement with IKEA calls for IKEA to pay no property tax for 20 years to the city of Oak Creek, no property tax for 20 years to the Oak Creek Franklin School District, no property tax for 20 years to MATC, no property tax for 20 years to MMSD, no property tax for 20 years to Milwaukee County, and no special assessments for 20 years. Do we still want IKEA in Oak Creek? I mean, what's the benefit to us? Normally, businesses decrease the tax burden to residents. That's the job, that's where we bring businesses in. IKEA will increase tax burden to residents for 20 years. Why would you do that? Oak Creek taxpayers need development that pays their fair share. Let IKEA develop, but stop the 20-year TID number 12. I rate property taxpayers of Oak Creek Ron and Carol Grundy." And I, Mayor, I'd just like to say, you know, we've grown quite fond of you, and, um, I just, but, but, uh, you know, I hate to see you leave this as your legacy in Oak Creek that for 20 years, we're gonna be dumped upon, and when these, when these, uh, when there's money needed to help out whatever has to be done in special assessments and things for IKEA, uh, we're gonna have to be taxed extra for that. It's gonna raise our tax bill, so why would we, why would you do that to us? That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you for worrying about my legacy. All right, up next is Nick Schmidt.
Mr. Schmidt, uh, 7842 South 13th Street. Uh, one simple question. If there's people missing on the common council and we have a vote, how does this work?
As much as we have a quorum, we're good.
Okay, just a quorum, you know, so they get deducted, or, I mean, shouldn't they be part of it, you know? Common council, this city especially right now, is really going strong, and we can't have, shouldn't have anybody missing. I mean, I, that's my biggest peeve because I've worked for X amount of years and I never missed anything, so I'm over on that.
Bring it back to the subject.
Okay, okay, here's the thing. I'm not necessarily against IKEA, you know? I'm just saying, this is a green area. I'm gonna go to our alderman in that area now. Have you checked this area? Has anybody in a common council just walked out into this area, just checked and seen it?
I was out there about a year ago.
About a year ago, okay, it's like garbage area, right? You know, could it be a garbage area? Could be a dump, like, maybe like the west of us?
I would not classify that line.
Okay, it's a green area, beautiful, right?
I'd, I'd call it vacant land.
Vacant land, okay, parkland, which parkland is usually beautiful land, too. Uh, the TIF district, I, we've had back and forth on this, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go quick on this, you know, it's like blighted area. Does anybody consider this a blighted area? It's beautiful, isn't it?
Blighted area?
Yeah, right by the expressway and off-ramp.
I'm not an expert on what determines blight.
Okay, all right, just, just asking that, okay.
All right, so your opinion on, on this proposal is what?
No, I can't, I'm fine with, I'm just, I'm, I'm against, uh, the TIF district, Steve, okay?
Got it.
Mayor, mayor, okay.
Wrap it up.
Okay, I'm gonna wrap it up. Okay, so here, here's the deal on here. We look at it as green space. Northwest Mutual looks at it as dollars, that's green. They're gonna make millions on this property. The acquisition between the county and everything, they've looked at this property for a minimum of 10 years. They know what the potential on it is. Only thing I'm against is why do we have to make it a TIF district? Why doesn't somebody approach them and let them pay for it? IKEA, let them pay for some. Why should the city of Oak Creek pay for anything? This is a, uh, a gateway to Milwaukee. Oak Creek is, is gonna be awesome, and IKEA's gonna be a part of it. So we shouldn't have to pay anything. They should be paying us for letting us give them this land and that. That's the, my biggest thing is the stiff that we have to give taxpayer money for these two companies which have deep pockets. We, they're not hurting for anything. They've known, they've looked at this property for at least 10 years, and they know what the potential, and they're gonna make millions on it.
That's good, thank you.
That's good.
All right, I'm gonna remind everyone, keep the comments brief. Thank you.
Jeremy Estness, 931 West Patonway Drive. Um, I'm against the TIF because I don't believe in corporate welfare or companies getting a very prime retail location right off an off-ramp. Um, we've already ignored the fact that it's right next to a brand-new school. There's no reason that we need to pay for them to put a building there. They should be able to pay for that on their own. They average in the U.S. over $10 million profit per store. That's profit, and we're paying them come here, when they're making $10 million a year. Next 20 years, they'll pay us a dime. Um, Mayor, you've stated several times you've received all positive feedback about this, yet nobody comes here to support this. One person in the three meetings I've been to between the city council meeting, the planning commission meeting, and tonight so far, has spoken for it. And the common was just, he's for it, and that was it, basically. Um, the people, the people you say support this, were they aware of the details of this as far as the taxes and how that's gonna work, and how they're not gonna pay any taxes? Not to mention the location of it as well. From people I've talked to, I'm, I'm gonna guess no, because every person I've talked to about this is shocked at the location and the fact that they're not paying taxes for 20 years. Um, I believe that it was probably purposely, um, held back the information that's, as far as details in this proposal. Uh, when it was announced, it certainly wasn't announced that there's a TIF going along with it, it was announced IKEA, Oak Creek, great, sounds great. It does, I agree, and I have no problem with that part right there. Problem I have is that I'm paying for it. Um, I have a big problem with that. Um, the photos that were circulated, they, um, cropped out the school, they photoshopped out homes on, on the south of the property. Even yourself, Mayor, um, after the, the city, the city council meeting and the rezoning, uh, I heard at least half dozen times the, the IKEA will be about 1,000, 1,200 feet from the school. The next day on the news, you set a quarter mile to a half mile. That's well shy of a quarter mile and way shy of a half mile. So either you don't know how far a mile is, or you just decided to embellish and make it sound better than it is.
I think a mile's 5,280 feet, right?
Exactly, so it was a quarter mile, sir.
Whatever one quarter of 5,280 feet is, so...
13, 13, 120.
Okay, what, and it's 1250, so it's pretty close. If you wanna nitpick, fine, make your points and sit down.
I, I'm trying to, you, you start that back and forth, sir.
I was off by a few hundred yards.
You doubled the distance, sir. Um, you stated that the average IKEA employee makes $50,000 a year. Um, where did that stat come from? I guarantee you, the average employee in IKEA retail store does not make $50,000 a year. Most of them will be entry-level retail jobs, $11, $12 an hour. Um, a handful of managers, I'm sure, will be making 50-plus, no problem. Uh, if we leave this land alone, um, eventually, we'll develop into residential neighborhoods like it should be around the school, and we won't be paying for it. The people that build those houses will pay for it like they should, just like IKEA should pay for this land and the development of it. Instead, for 20 years, every person in Oak Creek's gonna pay for it out of their pockets. Um, I realize, uh, from the other two means I have attended and spoke at regarding this topic that I'm wasting my time right now, and yours probably. Um, it was very obvious that most people up here did not care about the comments. It was not a factor in the decision. Um, it had a predetermined decision before the meeting ever started. You stated after the planning commission that overwhelming support for this when every person spoke against it.
Can you do me a favor?
Yep.
Just speak to what you believe and not what you think I believe or what you think I said, okay? I've given you lots of leeway, it's about five minutes now. Make your point, you, you know, I said this numerous ti...
Sir, I'll, I'll wrap it up.
I said this numerous times, you don't have to agree with me.
I know.
I'm okay with people not agreeing with me.
I, I've not seen anything that wasn't a fact.
But don't make stupid claims and try to nitpick about things like that.
Sir, I can...
And if you talk from the audience, you'll be kicked out of here.
I can play the video for you, sir, of, of what you stated on the news, and it was...
I know what I said.
Okay.
Speak your mind, and then sit down.
I'm trying to, I'm almost done, sir.
Wrap it up.
Um, again, I, I, like I said, it's quite clear that my, their input does not matter. Um, not one person spoke against this, and you stated that there's overwhelming support for it. So again, I reiterate that I do not support this TIF. Um, I don't support corporate welfare, and IKEA should pay for their own road to come, go into, go into the, uh, and sewers and things like that.
Thanks for your comments.
Kevin Lampe, 8436 South Hall Avenue. Many of the things we've stated already you disagree with, uh, it's in clear violation of Wisconsin state statutes. I can guarantee you, my son, who was at the last planning commission meeting, knows more than any of the members of the aldermen, uh, including Doug Seymour and including city administrator, uh, Jerry Peterson. Let's see. So let's go on to stuff that we haven't said. How about, this is the worst development agreement in the history of Oak Creek. I've talked with some residents, and they, after hearing the details they've made to comment, this is the worst development agreement in the history of the state. Um, I'd be hard-pressed to, uh, um, object to that claim. Uh, for 20 years, a development agreement for 20 years, a TIF tax-free for 20 years, it can't get any worse. 20 years is the max. Jerry Peterson, at a previous, uh, planning commission meeting, stated that, uh, Oak Creek has a history of retiring TIF debt early. Jerry Peterson, how does 20 years, uh, meet up with the, of the tradition of Oak Creek to retire TIF debt early?
This isn't a Q and A. State your opinion and sit down.
Uh, well, actually, Mayor, you always defer to your, your best...
I decide, the chair decides if a question is answerable. If, if the city administrator at some point wants to answer, I'm asking you to finish your comments and then sit down.
I, I am making my, this is.
Finish your comments and then sit down.
This is my statement. This is a statement that he made at a previous plan commission meeting.
Understand that. Finish your comments and then sit down.
This is the, the time that you guys are gonna vote on this.
I understand how it works.
This is gonna.
Finish your comments. This is the last time I'm gonna ask you, otherwise I will, I'll have them help you sit down.
Mayor, for 20 years, we're gonna live with this and you're not gonna give me three minutes? Let me ask.
I had five minutes and you're still talking to me, not reading your statement. Read your statement.
Okay. The next mayor, that's not gonna be you, because you've already stated you're not, you're not gonna run for the next one.
You should be happy about this.
Actually, I, I agree with Carol Grundy's comment. You're a good guy. You just got your head up in the IKEA cloud. For 20, for 20 years, Mayor, that's gonna be out there. You're gonna be gone and, well, let's see. You were the, you were the previous council president. So that would likely be, Ken Gale would be the next council president. That's kinda like, okay.
Let's get it back to the issue.
It is, it is the issue.
You're talking about mayoral elections. Get back to the IKEA item that's on this agenda.
That's what I'm talking about, Mayor. We're talking, we're talking about.
You've got 30 seconds to wrap up and then we're gonna go to our next speaker. So wrap it up.
Mayor, we're talking about 20 years.
Wrap it up.
The next mayor of Oak Creek is gonna have to sign a check for 800, this, I'm talking TIF. That's what you guys are agreeing upon tonight, Mayor. You're talking about agreeing to this TIF. That's what I'm talking about, Mayor.
I respectfully asked you to just to wrap up your comments. I don't have to allow public comment on this item, but I did.
You're right. You don't have to.
And you're.
And, and it was at the public, public hearing that you gave us time to talk. We appreciate that. And now, let me ask you something, Mayor.
It's not a Q and A. Make your comments and sit down.
Mayor, why, why for 20, Jesus Christ.
And don't swear.
That wasn't, that was a prayer. I'm asking for help.
Anything else?
I got, I got plenty, Mayor.
You're, I'm gonna go to the next.
How about, how about some news stuff?
I'm gonna go to the next speaker.
How about some news stuff? At a department head meeting, your best source on, on TIFs made a comment at a department head meeting that with all these TIFs in Oak Creek, this city is screwed. Jerry Peterson made the comment at a department head meeting.
Look, look.
There are witnesses to this, Mayor. So now you're gonna add another TIF to this on these ridiculous circumstances of 20 years? This is the worst?
Sit him down.
This is, this is the worst in.
I've asked you respectfully 10 times. Please sit down.
Well, with all due respect, Mayor.
I've asked you to wrap it up.
You didn't give me enough time.
Next up is Amanda Schmidt.
All right, obviously, I'm against the TIF. As we've seen here, this seems to me, in my opinion, that this is a personal agenda for you, Mayor, because you're not letting people speak and you're getting very, very defensive. Like Jeremy said, 27th and Drexel was where a lot of Oak Creek, everyone we talked to, it's not near the school, the corner of 27th and Drexel, that's where it is. Again, like Jeremy said, sorry, I'm repeating this, but it wasn't clear. It wasn't clear where IKEA was gonna go. So the public opinion isn't correct as far as this goes. And a lot of people, I think, still think it's going on 27th and Drexel. I'm concerned about how this started. This was getting scopes, numbers from departments like engineering, from the water and sewer, without any of our aldermen, including my alderman and the alderman of this area. He didn't have enough respect or he, they, you guys didn't think he was important enough to include in this decision. You guys brought the aldermen together in a meeting and said, here, vote on this. This looks really great. Hey, this is what we're gonna do. They weren't important enough to be included in the process. This tid is not good for Oak Creek. It's not. We have enough. Let IKEA, fine, come, come, come to Oak Creek. Let's bring businesses. Let's bring IKEA to Oak Creek. We do not have to pay for it. If they wanna come here because Oak Creek is so wonderful and growing and we're so respectful of our community and we think it's the best place to live, the best place to work, the best place to have a business, then let them pay for it. And they will, they probably will, just like Target does. They don't have a TIF, just like Woodman's. Look at all of the people that Woodman's brings to this area. No TIF. Let's not be known for our handouts. Let's not be known for lack of strategic planning. Let's be known as a strength, community, that our council listens to their constituents and let's do that. Vote against this TIF. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for keeping it brief. Evan Lampy.
Hi, my name is Evan Lampy. I live at 3240 West Drexel Avenue. It's in the city of Franklin, Milwaukee, or Franklin, Oak Creek School, Oak Creek School District. I'm against the TIF. Oak Creek is offering IKEA the value of infrastructure and services by only receiving tax revenue of $229 a year for up to 20 years. We keep hearing about they're paying no taxes. Well, to be technically correct, they're paying taxes on their current value, which is 50, well, 30 of the 50 acres that is being assessed as agricultural land, about $10,000 that comes out to about $229 a year. That is what they will pay. IKEA is offering Oak Creek the honor of gracing us with their presence because somehow that can replace the very real cost of Oak Creek's infrastructure and services. Large corporations have a goal to maximize profit. The Oak Creek Common Council has responsibility to act in the best interest of their constituents. Sometimes, like in this case, corporations' goals and the interests of the constituents are in direct conflict. If the common council approves this resolution, they're basically choosing those corporate interests over their own constituents' interests. How else can you strive giving corporation access to an estimated $100 million a year in annual sales and Oak Creek's infrastructure and services while not expecting them to pay their estimated $700,000 to $800,000 in property taxes every year to cover those infrastructure and services in schools? How else can you describe subsidizing an international furniture retailer to compete directly with existing Wisconsin-based furniture retailers that do pay their property taxes and are headquartered in the Milwaukee and Waukesha area? Apparently, there's a new category of business I was not previously aware of, too big to pay property taxes to lowly cities. Independent studies on TIF in Illinois and Indiana, just name a few, have shown TIF district creation, especially retail TIFs, corresponds to decreased employment and higher property tax burden on cities overall. This makes sense when you count for the fact that promoting growth within a TIF district hurts growth outside of TIF districts and the cost of infrastructure and services not paid by those within the TIF must be paid by those outside the TIF. It is expected for IKEA to ask for such a deal to maximize their profit. It should be expected for Oak Creek to say no. If you want to come, then pay your share. If members of the Oak Creek Common Council honestly believe IKEA is entitled to such a deal and that is to Oak Creek's benefit, then it is time for some new members on Oak Creek Common Council. The worst part of a deal like this is the negative effects will be felt for decades afterward, long after most of the people voting on this have left office. It will be cumulative with all the other deals the city is offering. And down the road, when tax rates go up or services decline, people wonder why, but the answer will be obvious. This and all the other handouts we are giving to businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up is Ann Lampy.
Ann Lampy, 8436 South Howell Avenue. And you just got an MIT education for free. I hope you know that. He did a lot of research on this and.
He did.
He, he is. And he did all of that research and he is right in everything that he said. I want to start by actually addressing the council report and things that I believe are missing from the council report. So if you would look at the council report, and near the bottom, it talks about the significant financial terms of the project. I read the development agreement and I've read the project plan and there are things that are not listed here that are significant. For one thing, it does not say that the infrastructure costs are capped under the development at $5,200,000. So if the costs exceed that, which anyone who's done a public project knows, that generally happens, those costs are on us because they're capped. So the residents will be paying those differences. The $25,000 annual administrative fee, that is in the development agreement. It's to cover the costs associated with that development. That is not to relieve a burden on the city taxpayers. That is to cover their cost to the city for the, this TIF every year. So that's not, that's not something they're giving us. The, on the next page, it talks about the, the increment of the remaining property in the district. And it says that it will be used to pay for other eligible project costs. Well, let's remember that they've capped the costs, so there really won't be any unless you reopen the TIF, except for the incentive that's possible for the other business. That's the only one. If you look at what the actual costs are, it said, you know, the, the cost of this is 21 million, I'm doing this without my glasses, 21,943,102. It's actually, if you include the interest, which is a cost, in the project plan, it's actually 22,351,125, which exceeds the expected increment totally over that district. That expected increment is just shy of 22 million. So before you even go into this, you're, you're underwater. Okay? Just, just realize that. Another significant financial term that's not in here is that IKEA is exempt from special assessments for the 20 years. So if you want to run that road to 27th Street, and you're going to need to because you're funneling a million and a half cars down this road every year, that's not on IKEA. That's either on the next TIF district or that's on the rest of us. It says on page two of the council report, that project investment of not less than 50 million. Actually, in the development agreement, it says they intend to invest 50 million. And we all know what the road to Unoware is paved with. So they're not tied to 50 million. The estimated assessed value of this project is 30 million, not 50 million. So don't be blinded by that 50 million number. It's 30 million. Given the fact that they're projected to, to earn 80 to 100 million dollars in sales a year and their normal profit is, margin is 10%, and we'll be generous, say 50 million, they will cover their costs in five years for the money they invest in there, just out of their profit. But we will be giving them tax-free status for 20 years. That doesn't make sense to me. The aggressive schedule that's mentioned in here on the public improvements comes with an aggressive penalty clause. If things fall behind, it's on the city to make sure that they're done. The city is going to be the one that, that covers that through their developer. Those expected sales of 100 to 80 to 100 million means that the 18.2 gift that you would be giving them equals 1% of their sales over those 20 years, something that IKEA could obviously afford on their own.
I'm gonna ask you to kinda wrap it up, Ann.
I am. Now you'll hear my personal opinion. And I know, I bet the people from IKEA are nice people, nice to their families and their pets, but I have to tell you frankly, I saw a picture of this building and it is aesthetically disturbing. You are putting a $300,000 bright blue building adjacent to the freeway and that's what people are going to identify with Oak Creek. You look at what people say buildings should look like. They should go with the land. This is, this is going to be an eyesore. And we've heard how we need, that this will rebrand Oak Creek. I thought Drexel Town Square was supposed to be the new identity of the city. We haven't even occupied the buildings and we're looking to the next thing is rebranding Oak Creek. I don't think we need rebranding. I like my city. I raised a nice family here. I've lived here for, I hate to tell you how many years. It's close to 50. And our children live in the area. They've been happy to be here. You're changing it. This is how people will see us. And I don't really wanna be associated with that blue building that sells put-together furniture, that pays its employees less than a family-supporting wage. And that doesn't even say what the people who are making the furniture are making. There's nothing wrong with our identity. And I ask you to vote no on this. TID.
Thank you for your comments. Open it up to the council for questions and comments. Alderman Gale. Alderman Tom.
Could we get, could we get some staff response in, in relation to the public comments? Because I think, I mean, I, I could ask the questions. They're rhetorical. I think I know the answers, but I'd like to hear from staff what they have to say.
At least in the, the comments that were made today, I think that the residents have tried hard to understand how this TIF is, is going to operate, but there's some pretty significant errors, I think, in that understanding. Some of those would be the payment of no taxes. IKEA is gonna pay full taxes for the entire time that they are here. Those taxes will be redirected towards public infrastructure and towards the incentives on the property. So it's not $720. It's more like $720,000 a year in taxes on a $30 million assessment will be made. So taxes will be paid for the entire 20 years, consistent with the tax rates that each one of the districts applies for. Those will get redirected towards the infrastructure and towards the incentives within the district.
Please do not.
It's a flat-out lie. Throw me out now. It's a flat-out lie.
You can walk yourself out.
It's a flat-out lie.
Walk yourself out.
Unless he's got more to say.
Walk yourself out.
It's a flat-out lie.
It's not a lie.
Move along.
City Administrator, you've got more to say on this?
Kevin, move, move out. You, you know that you don't conduct yourselves that way.
It's a flat-out lie.
No. Go ahead. No. City Administrator.
And the council knows, I, I know these issues frontwards and backwards. And that's, that's the issue. They will pay taxes for the entire 20-year period. There will be, there will be.
Hold on a second. We're gonna take a short break.
They'll be paying all the taxes that are due. They get funneled to the city. They'll be paid for the infrastructure and for the incentives. So there's no tax-free basis. The district will last 20 years, so the incentives to IKEA will be 20 years. I think in my plan commission comments in the record, it indicates that. Corporate realities are that nobody would like to provide these incentives, incentives if we didn't need to, but development priorities, development policies, ROIs, whether it's a big company or a small company, are competitive. These folks know what they're doing. They wouldn't locate here if we weren't providing these investments as opposed to cost to ultimately increase significantly the city's tax base. So that would be my comments. I think it's unfortunate when things are identified as fact and indicated. You know they're not gonna pay taxes for 20 years. That tries to bring the public along on an issue and you know that you're gonna have to pay those costs, that's patently incorrect. Costs aren't gonna be borne by the citizens of this community. There will be taxes paid every year on that property and then those taxes will be redirected according to the development agreement. And that's just the fact.
Thank you. Doug, did you have a comment or no?
To the extent that TIF law certainly is substantial and the city has engaged not only our own city attorney, but also legal counsel as required by TIF statute to certify that what we're doing is appropriate and proper. Now, you can, and we certainly have heard many opinions with respect to whether they consider it a good idea to create this TIF district. But I would suggest to this council that you've got a city attorney backed by legal counsel that says it is entirely appropriate to do so if that's what you as a city want to do. So from that perspective, I, I think that, you know, you certainly have heard a number of different opinions. you certainly have heard a number of different opinions as to whether they feel it's a good idea to. That is a decision that is yours and yours alone. And feel confident that if you do choose to pursue that, that you're doing so with a correct legal basis, and that is backed up by not only our own city attorney, but outside legal counsel.
Thank you, Doug. Alderman Gale.
Thanks, Doug. I appreciate the comment there. I think the entire package here and the entire effort on behalf of staff and every elected here has been incredible in terms of getting to this point in this agreement with this particular firm. It is gonna be a significant addition to the city. Obviously, the legal opinion that you talk of, Doug, is in the council packets of those folks who obviously took the time, did see the fact that Godfrey Khan has offered their opinion on our, and they formally do condone our implementation of TIF law on this particular project. I think the city of Oak Creek will benefit to a significant degree moving forward. And although there is some active opposition to the project as we speak, I think overall, in general, the citizens of Oak Creek will be handily benefited not only by this particular project, but what it leads to in the near future and that entire area and in this entire city. So, I applaud the efforts on behalf of staff. I applaud the efforts on behalf of the electeds. The well-struck agreement with our partnership at NML IKEA School District, everyone involved here. It's a coup for the city and a good day to be a citizen of Oak Creek.
I have said this a bunch of times, and I apologize if I raise my voice because one of the things I pride myself on is not doing that. So, I apologize to anybody in the audience if they were offended by the fact that I raised my voice or lost my temper. But it's frustrating as a mayor that people can't disagree without losing their temper or losing the professionalism of the room, which I think we should respect because I try to respect it, and to fashion their theories about what they think TIFs are or what this development agreement is about, when that's really not what it is. We are, we try, we're all part-time elects here. We try to do the best job we can. We all have, in most cases, have other jobs. We try to do the right thing. I can tell you that, because I chair the Milwaukee County Group of Mayors and Village Presidents, and I can tell you every one of those mayors and village presidents would do the same thing we're doing tonight. Because I've talked to all of them, and I know what they think about it. So, this is not some extreme wish or grab for attention or a big story. We understand how development works. We pride, I pride myself, and hopefully the council does too, on bringing the right things to the city. And I'm in the community every day. I attend most, if not every, event that happens. And I can tell you that the overwhelming response to IKEA is positive. This is not an indication of what the community's saying. No matter how loud you say it, no matter how many emails you write, it's not an indication of what the community's saying. And you could do it, and I would have respected it a lot more if you could do it in a professional way, and some of you did. That's how it should always be. We are not going back, as much as everybody loves Old Oak Creek, and I grew up here and I went to high school here, we're not going back there. Cities that don't develop will die. The levee is frozen. You have to develop to maintain what you have. If you want to see erosion of city services, if you want to see the quality of life that we have and we enjoy, and hopefully that we're making better, those things will not happen if you don't develop. We think, as a council, that we're developing in the right places. The interchange is one of those places. There is no hoodwinking of the school. The superintendent was aware from day one. It's no surprise. That's the reality. You don't have to agree with us. That's fine. I don't agree with everything the council does. That's the way it works. But don't assume some conspiracy theory or some trickery that's happening. This is a great company, international company, that every city in the state would be happy to bring onboard. We are one of them that got chosen, and we are happy to host that business here. That's the reality of it. Again, you don't have to agree. I'm not taking any more questions on this. No more comments. Any more, Kirkowski?
Oh, thank you. I'll try and choose my words carefully because sometimes I speak my mind and don't exactly make everybody happy. But I'm not gonna repeat what you said, Mr. Mayor, because I agree with what you said. However, I have been out, it isn't a negative however. I go out occasionally and talk to people about stuff that is happening in the city. I mean, I do it as often as I can. And to have people come up to the podium and basically tell us we're dumber than somebody else who's done some homework, especially somebody sitting up here who has a law degree, especially somebody who has taken this paperwork and vetted it through companies that deal with TIF districts, and then stand up there and say, "They're smarter than us." I somewhat get offended. To stand there and say that the second district, Alderman, was probably left out of everything going on, I'd hate to, I don't really want to say what I want to say because we were all kept informed when the time was appropriate. And whether you choose to believe me or not, I can't change your mind. And I watched the reaction of the opponents, the opposition, sitting out there shaking their heads, no, the things that are being said by either the city administrator or the mayor. Well, to me, that's, you've got a closed mind, you don't want to listen. And while I appreciate your comments, I've read the emails, I'll close with saying this. I had occasion to talk to some developers that they don't live in the city, but they have business in the city and they have business elsewhere. And we talked about the IKEA development and the costs and the TIF and, I mean, everything. Because I was trying to get some questions answered from some outside people. And the bottom line from these people that said, "Hey, look, that's the way, that's the way things are done because that is the way development is done. That is the way businesses come in." And the comment from one individual was, "If Oak Creek doesn't do it, didn't do it, wasn't selected, or whatever the case may be, they'll end up in Peewaqui or Waukesha or somebody else, and those communities are gonna have to do the same thing to keep IKEA there." But the fact that they chose Oak Creek, and IKEA brings a lot of people, a lot of other development, and this guy said, "Do it. It's a great thing for Oak Creek." So, I'm just a commenter. I go out and talk to people. I listen to their opinions. And that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I guess I'll put my two cents. And I'm pretty much the only alderperson up here that doesn't agree with this. And I do happen to agree with some of the constituents that were up here at the podium earlier. And I kind of hold the same opinion that for a discount furniture store putting 13, 15, 18 million dollars on the table and, you know, and not really recouping anything out of that for a 20-year period, really, I don't think is a good investment for the city now or any time in the future. It's something that I think we're putting way too much money into this thing for the amount of return that potentially it could bring. And I know I won't convince any other alderpersons up here to change their vote, but I think we're just putting way too much money out there for two worldwide corporations that can really afford to do this on their own. And as far as the mayor's comment, and I don't want to take the mayor to task, but, you know, he has a occasion to talk with many other mayors and many others' village presidents and whatnot. But, you know, maybe all of those village presidents and mayors would want something like this in their community too. But they don't vote to get it there. And their councils and village boards would have to vote to give these incentives to these companies as well. So, maybe all of them would like to have it, but they still gotta go through the procedure to try to get it. And I think we're just giving these people way too much money. And I don't think a community that's our size should be throwing this kind of money at big corporations like this to get things done here. The mayor said earlier that Oak Creek's a destination. Well, by God, if it's a destination, people should be willing to pay a little bit to come here. We shouldn't be paying them to come here. And if, you know, we're not a destination, then we do have to pay people to come here. And I guess, you know, maybe we're not as hot of a spot as what we think we are if we gotta pay people this kind of money to bring them to town. That's all I got to say.
Any other comments?
Mayor, just to clarification, we're not paying IKEA a cent to be here. They receive no incentive as part of this agreement. So, that's just a clarification. That we're not throwing money at them. Citizens of Oak Creek are not throwing money at them. It's incremental tax base here in Oak Creek, but not for the fact that we meet this agreement with them and they generate tax revenue, which will then be divvied up to various different administrative costs, principal interest on the debt for the infrastructure, and return to them in terms of their agreement we've struck here tonight. So, there's no money being thrown at them. There's no grant being offered. It is what it is.
I agree, Ken. We are letting them pay their tax, but we're reimbursing them all the money they're giving us. So, for all intents and purposes, we're, they're paying us, we're giving them a check back. So, we're just doing a money turnaround every year here. They're giving us money, we're giving it right back. So, people in the audience are correct. We don't get anything out of this thing for about 20 years. That's the long and the short of it. And Mr. Peterson kind of had a little spin on his presentation. It's redirected, well, it's redirected right back to IKEA for the most part.
If they weren't here, it wouldn't be generated, Mark.
All right. We both get your points. You have different few points on that. All right. No other comments or questions? Motion on 25.
Kavitch will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11723071916, creating, describing, and making certain findings and approving the project plan in parentheses, the project plan for tax increment, District Number 12.
Gale, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Bukavitch?
Aye.
Verhalen?
O.
Kirkowski is aye.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I showed up late.
I added you for this. Kirkowski?
Aye.
All right. Resolution passes 4-1. Moving, Item 26 is a consideration of Resolution Number 11724-071916. It approves a certified survey map for the property at 1830 R. West Drexel in the Second District. Doug, are you taking this one?
Sure. Thank you. The current property owner, Walden OC LLC, is requesting approval of CSM for the property at 1830 R. West Drexel Avenue. The proposal is to create two parcels for development and one outlot to be dedicated to the city for road right-of-way and sidewalk purposes. The sidewalk easement will appear on the map prior to recording per the applicant. Following the division, Lot 1 will be 28.75 acres. Lot 2 would be 21.18 acres. Both lots do conform to the requirements of the B6 Interchange Regional Retail Zoning District. Again, Lot 1 is proposed for the IKEA development. Lot 2 is not proposed for development at this time. The Plan Commission has reviewed the CSM at the meeting of July 12th and has recommended to the council its approval with the following conditions, that the donated wetlands are shown on all applicable sheets of the map prior to recording, and that all technical corrections, including but not limited to spelling errors, minor coordinate damage corrections, and corrections required for compliance with the municipal code and the Wisconsin statutes are made prior to recording.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, motion on 26.
Kavitch will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11724071916, approving a certified survey map for the property at 1830 R. West Drexel Avenue.
Gale, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Bukavitch?
Aye.
Verhalen?
No.
Toman?
Aye.
Item 27 is a consideration of Resolution Number 11725-071916. It approves a certified survey map for the properties at 9750 R., 9770, 9856, and 9860 South 20th Street in the Sixth District. Doug?
Thank you. Black Bear Battle is requesting approval of the CSM that combines the property, the addresses that were just listed. Following the consolidation, the lot would be 9.42 acres. This CSM is in relation to proposals to expand the existing warehouse facility on the property at 9770 South 20th Street. The Plan Commission has reviewed the proposal for the combination of the parcels via CSM and has recommended their approval subject to the attached three conditions. Under the fiscal impact, it's just important to note that they are outstanding to through special assessments for storm sewer and water main that will need to be paid as a result of the recording of the CSM.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Did they get charged for the improvements or not? Let's see, special assessments before they start construction?
Maybe at the time of recording, yes.
Any other question?
Kavitch will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11725071916, approving a certified survey map for the properties at 9750 R., 9770, 9856, and 9860.
Kirkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Bukavitch?
Aye.
Verhalen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
All right. We're going all the way back to new business, which is Item 15. It's a motion to authorize the purchase of furniture and fixtures from various vendors to complete the build-out of the emergency operations center, EOC, and civic center space in an amount not to exceed $115,440. Jerry?
Just briefly, use of this building since we've been here have identified some need for additional furniture and some corrections. We've also got the build-out of the EOC space that was not done as part of the original construction and FFNE, the furniture fixture and equipment. At that point, we had not identified where the financial resources would come from that. Since that point, the council's authorized us to do some architectural work and build out that space. We've identified funds to both build out and furnish that space. What you've got in front of you is primarily furnishings for the EOC space. Glad to report that we've had more usage of the multipurpose room than we thought we would. So, we have a need for additional tables and chairs to be able to accommodate the groups that we have in that area. We have some shortfalls in our lunchroom where we need some more tables and chairs. Again, a good thing to accommodate the employee numbers that we have in that space. And then finally, sun is coming in from some directions. We did not think it was gonna be coming in. We didn't have blinds on the north side of the building, but we've had glare, significant glare, on our office space. It includes the attorney's office, the mayor's office, includes the Lake Vista Conference Room and the Tower Room. So, we're looking to put blinds there. And then we've got the upper windows in this main foyer area that quite literally are shining right in the eyes of our staff that's behind the counter. We had not anticipated that, so we're looking to correct all of those issues. And I'm pleased to say that we do have funding sources for all of this. We've got a signed purchase and sale agreement along with escrow deposits for the property that's east of here, which would more than cover these costs. So, I would say some of these items are necessary. Some of them are desirable. And, you know, we could potentially do without. And I'll leave it at that.
Any idea what the breakout of necessary versus desirable is?
I'd say all the EOC is necessary. We absolutely need that. I mean, could we live without the blinds? Yeah, but it really doesn't allow us to use the computers, the screens we have. The glare is pretty bad for the folks who are in that. I would say we could cut back on some of the furnitures and chairs. You know, maybe 25% of this is maybe desirable more than absolutely necessary. It'd be 25, $30,000.
Counsel? Alderman Kirkowski?
I'll echo the comments with regards to the glare. I had some of the staff employees, the staff tell me and witnessed that the sun just coming through the windows. It was just unbearable at times. I just want to go back to, for what it's worth, go back to the creation of this building where in fact that where the EOC was, it was simply going to, the wall was gonna end, and we were gonna have a half of a floor. And, you know, I'll take a little credit about saying, "Hey, how about if we just build out that second floor now?" And so, we saved, I think we saved money by building it now. And of course, an EOC is one of those necessary evils where you don't ever want to activate it, but you gotta have it because of the, you know, the times we live in. it, but you got to have it because of the, you know, the times we live in. So I just think, you know, to get it up and running, get the right furnishings in there and get it ready to go in case we need it, it's a good thing.
And just to comment on that, it will be ready all the time. Right now, in order to activate the EOC, we have to set up the phone systems, we have to set up the tables. This EOC would be set up and be able to usable on a moment's notice. So, and you're absolutely correct, significant savings to be able to create that shell space. Again, that we hadn't identified how we were going to pay for the rest of it. We have now lots of savings related to that, I think, as well as building the underground parking. I think there were comments from the council on that as well. And quite honestly, credit to the council, creating the buildable space east of Market Avenue. I think that was Alderman Bukavitch, if I remember. I mean, we're to the tune of $1.2 million to the good by splitting that out and having that as a developable parcel from both a revenue source and building the tax base.
You get 1%.
Yeah, so good all the way around.
Yeah, I'll just keep waiting for that.
All right. I mean, that just, I mean, the way the state of the world is and the state of the country, I don't think we can afford not to have an EOC that's ready to go at any time. It certainly would have came in handy in 2012 as a new mayor, so I would support those expenses. Alderman Gale.
Just, I think it's important, we are the backup EOC for the county as well, so that's an important factor to keep in mind as we build out a facility here.
Good point.
One last item on that. We haven't created all the electronics, which is, you can imagine, are going to be pretty appreciable. We think we, because of that fact that we're the backup for the county and we may enter into agreements with some of our surrounding communities, we may be eligible for grants for some of that, and that's the area that we have most likelihood that we would do that. And so we'll be looking at that once we get to outfit the room with some of the, some of the really neat electronics that are out there that help do the job of the EOC centers.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Toman.
I didn't have the list here for some reason. I borrowed Alderman Gale's list. I, you know, if there's a possibility we can trim 20, 25% off of this, I'd support it 100%. I won't support it as it stands if, if that's, I mean, that statement's already in the public. If we can trim it, given some of the controversy that we experienced with this building and some of the things that possibly could have been trimmed that we didn't, I think this is a spot we should start with. I'm not talking about the blinds, essentials. I'm not talking about that. That's something that we need, but I think we should go over this list. I don't know, do we have to vote on this tonight, or can we come up with a trend list to maybe?
Can we just cap it?
I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it.
Can we cap it at 25% less?
Jerry, are you getting purchasing discounts for some quantities here or not?
I don't think there's significant purchasing discounts, and I would probably prefer the council, if you would, set a number, as the mayor indicated, have us work within that number, and we'll work the numbers to try to get to that.
Alderman Verhaelen.
I'd be in favor of a cap at about $100,000. 15%.
Okay. That's 15% right here. Well, that's less than 15%. Does the rest of the council support a $100,000 cap? Sure. I think we got consensus. Let's make a motion on that, then.
Kukowski will make a motion to authorize the purchase of furniture and fixtures from various vendors to complete the build-out of the Emergency Operations Center and Civic Center space in an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Verhaelen, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavitch.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kukowski.
Aye.
Item 16 is a motion to approve an architectural service agreement with Rinkachung Architecture Inc. in an amount not to exceed $15,000 for a public bathroom build-out in the wired development C3 building in the 2nd District.
Again, this is something that we'd anticipated early on in the Drexel Town Square development with all the good things that are going on there without all the public use. We had a very good event on Saturday with a dog dock diving. We've got lots of utilization of our less slippery splash pad now. There's going to be lots of events there, lots of need for public restrooms. We have built-in space for that was in front of you tonight is the architectural contract to build out that space. You know, that's a fairly high cost for the construction costs that we have here, but there's quite a number of meetings that we have to have for reviewing the plans and so forth, and it's a small project, so you tend to have higher percentage on that. We have met with Rinkachung, myself, our park supervisor and streets director as well, and we've got a basic design in place for the bathrooms. One item I would note for council, we have another item on build-out of a police substation out there. We have some potential that we may trade space, get a little more space to the police substation. These two spaces are back-to-back and eliminate potentially a couple stalls that we have in both the men's and the bathroom if we need that space for the substation. So that's a little bit of a flexible issue depending on how the architectural detail goes and whether we can fit all the things that are needed in both of those spaces.
Oh, yeah, with the splash pad out there, it's going to be a necessary add-in.
We've got men's bathrooms, women's bathrooms, and then we have a family bathroom, and we expect there's going to be a fair number of folks, you know, changing kids from, you know, maybe the wet swimsuit to we're going to dinner, which is what we'd like to encourage. So we're going to have those three spaces there.
Anything else? Motion?
Kavitch will make a motion to approve an architectural service agreement with Rinkachung Architecture, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $15,000 for a public bathroom build-out in the wired property C3 building.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kukowski.
Aye.
Bukavitch.
Aye.
We'll do 17, and then we'll jump to the meeting room policy, because I see the two ladies are sitting there. 17 is a motion to approve an architectural service agreement with Rinkachung Architecture, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $15,000 for a police substation build-out in the wired development C3 building in the 2nd District.
No additional comments. I made the, I think, the comments you needed here on the previous item.
Very necessary, very needed. It's a, I think, a good addition to the Drexel Town Square campus because I think it makes people feel safer, and it does make, and it does make people safer and even lends itself to people wanting to use the site versus maybe not coming out. Any questions? Motion.
Kavitch will make a motion to approve an architectural service agreement with Rinkachung Architecture, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $15,000 for a police substation build-out in the wired development C3 building.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kukowski.
Aye.
Bukavitch.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
All right. We'll jump to 19. The motion to approve a revised Civic Center meeting room policy effective 8-1-2016. Jill and Sharon are both here. Welcome.
So I, before you, you have a recommended revision to the meeting room policy for the shared rooms here in the Civic Center. Back in December, we, I brought, we brought before you an initial policy, and the intention had always been to revise the policy and make recommended changes after six months after we had been in the building and had some time to figure out what was working and what wasn't. After six months, it's become fairly obvious to the staff that the current policy that we created was unduly complicated, and it's been difficult both for citizens to navigate and for the staff to implement. So the recommended changes simplify the process for both citizens and for staff. We're hoping that it will make the Civic Center meeting rooms more accessible for use, and also it will be more in line with the way that the Recreation Department reserves the park pavilions and Henry Miller Park.
Okay. Questions?
Gale, only one thing. Did you prepare the council report?
He did.
Can you, in the future, I don't know if it's your personal clause to reintroduce cursive writing to the world, but.
No cursive.
Got it.
Hard to read. It's tough. Not fast. I like the.
No other questions? Motion on 19.
Oh, sorry. Kavitch will make a motion to approve the revised Civic Center meeting room policy effective 8-1-16.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kukowski.
Aye.
Bukavitch.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
I think it's 20s related, so we'll do that. It's a consideration of resolution number 11721-071916, establishing various fees, permits, and charges charged by the City of Oak Creek effective 8-1-2016. I'm assuming those reflect the revised policy?
They do. Once again, we discovered that they were unduly complicated, and because of the new process that we're going to use, we did want to, once again, bring it more in line with the way that the Recreation Department charges fees for use of the parks. So we followed their protocol for charging a resident fee, and then the non-resident fee is double that amount, and then it'll be standard fee across the board except for recognized service groups will not be charged a fee. Recognized service groups as well as government entities and groups that are partnering with city departments.
Sharon, you concur? You just come to see me yell? Yeah, I suppose it was. Can't wait to get home. All right. Any questions or comments?
Sorry, man. I'm delaying the effort tonight, but Jill, any particular, because it's just gray on my sheet, so I imagine it was highlighted somewhere, but any particular vast differences in the fees here?
Um, no. The, for the most part, the fees have dropped because we're no longer, in the previous, in the previous iteration, it was based on a set amount for every two hours and then an additional fee for every hour. Now it's just four hours across, it's four-hour blocks, Monday through Friday, and then an all-day fee for the day, for Saturdays. We reduced the security deposit, which anyone is, but everyone is going to be required to pay that for any of the rooms that allow food or have the really intensive technology in them. But other than that, no, for the most part, like I said, all the fees have actually been reduced because we've expanded the block of time that you're booking the room for.
Just as a curiosity, are we actually seeing usage of the technology training room?
Not yet, but that's one of the things that I'm hoping that this policy, this policy has, what we have noticed as staff, is that we are getting a lot of interest, and then they see the, they see the procedure that we put in place, and they kind of walk away from it. And so by trying to simplify it, we want, we've taken that feedback and tried to make it as user-friendly as possible. We plan on promoting it more.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Go ahead.
The only thing I was going to point out, and I do this through the stormwater issues when we have success, I think really good success in the design of this building and the design of the rooms, good utilization by the public, a lot of interest in that. It activates the space. It indicates that the public buildings, in fact, our public buildings, usable and are used by the public. So I think that that's an important point for folks who aren't visiting here. You all see that, you know, as you visit here, but not everybody from the public does that, and we're glad to see the public here and utilizing their building.
Gale will move to approve resolution 11721-071916, establishing various fees, permits, and charges, charges charged by the City of Oak Creek effective 8-1-16. Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kukowski.
Aye.
Bukavitch.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Back to 18. It's a consideration, motion to consider a motion to award the contract for construction of the city's communication tower support structure to McGill Construct Company. Is that construct or construction? At a bid price of $179,000.
Just a couple of comments on that. Be honest with you, I had a little bit of sticker shock at these bids. We expected these to be lower. As I dealt into this with our designer and this conversations with the two bidders out here, I've become more comfortable with these numbers. We have high-quality materials on this structure. I think that's important for us to show some leadership on that for other developments in the city that we can point to. Our projects that we're taking the building materials and taking them on the support structures, we're basically using the brick and the stone and the gate structures that we have, that we spent so much time on the fire station, and we're emulating that there. We did that at this building where our garbage surround, you know, uses the same building materials. That's something we try to encourage through site plan review through the Plan Commission. Hard for us to do that if we aren't doing that on our own building. So a little, a little higher than I thought, but about half of the actual cost is the materials that we're using from there. If we were to go to a split-faced block, I could probably take $40,000 off of this, but we wouldn't be really emulating the same architecture and the same materials that we had. We also had material costs for the slab that we had in the gates that were about another $40,000 beyond the $80,000s. We've got about $120,000 in material costs, the rest of it's labor and profit for project, which is about right. So the council, again, could save dollars if we wanted to do that, primarily if we went to a split-faced block. I wouldn't recommend that, and I'd recommend award of this because I think it's important for us to set the example and not necessarily look at what's the least expensive, but I think it's important to fit into the neighborhood and emulate the materials. And there, I certainly understand there can be disagreement on that.
There we go.
Jerry, I noticed the pad is 21 by 34 and change. How tall is the structure? Do you remember?
It's probably about 14, 15 feet high.
So it's going to be noticeable, right?
Yeah, it is. It's fairly high. It's the exact height of the, I think, Tom, it's the surround of the generator building. So the generator building that's on the east side of the building, it matches exactly that height and it matches that architecture. So.
Other questions? Alderman Verhaelen.
As far as the outward appearance of the structure, did anyone actually look at a one with a decorative concrete, any design you want, field stone, emulate brick, you can do anything with poured concrete? I wonder if you looked at it.
We didn't, and you're right, you can get pretty close to that, but we did not do that in terms of the pricing.
I was just kind of wondering because I think something like that would meet quite a bit, probably couldn't match exactly.
Yeah, if you remember, we've got the lintels, we've actually got kind of the cut stone on the horizontal lintels, and then we have the brick, and we have actually, I think, this lanin stone on the first three or four feet, so we've got a variety of uses out there. And you can, I don't disagree with you. You can get, where you can emulate that, you aren't going to get it exactly, you're not going to get the right towers. Again, that's up to the council if you want to do that.
Any other comments on that one? Alderman Toman.
If we would go to a, the different materials here, Jerry.
We'd have to reject these bids and we'd have to put the specs together again.
Is there a difference in life of the materials, or would they basically be the same?
I think you'd have similar life cycles, whether you went to a split-faced block or you had the kind of the concrete, the decorative concrete, I think you'd have similar life cycles.
I think we should go back and look at it.
Is there urgency in getting this done?
We have one vendor that we'd like to locate at the site. We're in the discussions with the agreement for that, so that's the only item that we have.
All right. We're going to, we're going to build something.
Yeah.
We're going to have, and then we'll have the same vendor, we'll come back and ask to be in that building. So is there any urgency that has to be done tonight or can wait two weeks?
No.
Council want to wait two weeks?
If we're going to actually explore that, though, I want to see what it looks like. I mean, physical.
Some examples of different.
Uh, city engineers and comments.
Mike Simmons?
I just think if there's going to be redesign and re-advertising, we won't turn this around in two weeks. So, we need, everyone needs to understand that. I would say that's a minimum of six weeks before it would be back, and possibly having to go back to plant commission.
In your opinion, is there any, is there real savings that would be realized by investigating this other, these other options? Or are we just, are we just cutting ourselves?
You know, you're gonna pay the engineer a little bit more fee to, you know, put this together. That wouldn't be much, I can't imagine anything more than like $4,000 or $5,000. But, you know, you're taking that off of, and you're losing the time, you know, so... It's a really good question. So, I think timing is the key. So, Jerry, I know you said you had a deal and it works with one of the carriers?
The estimate I get from the engineer, the design engineer that I talked to today, we, we could be talking in the area of a redesign, $40,000, $50,000 savings if we went to a different material.
You know, in the future, why don't we investigate some other options on these things, so we're not sitting here, you know, guessing? You know, I know that, I know when Caesar presented, I think it was that plant commission, when he presented the idea that he wanted to match the architecture of the firehouse, correct?
Correct.
If there's a way to do that with multiple materials, present that as part of our options. You know, if we have options, we can decide at night. So, when you put it out to bid, can you not put it out to bid for various building options, or you have to put it out?
Yes, you can.
What does the council want to do?
Want to wait a, first?
Wait. And I also, what Ken said, see some examples of what different bricks look like, you know?
Oh, then we, do we need a motion to reject the bids? That's the question, right?
Or you hold it?
Or can we just hold it?
I think we, I think we have the ability to hold this until the next meeting. There's a, but I believe not beyond that.
So, maybe between now and the next meeting, could you secure samples of fabricated concrete?
I think we can give the council some direction by then. I think we can complete things.
Even without doing all the official stuff, if you can find a material that matches it or is close, then we at least have some idea. We don't have any of that. Let's hold, let's hold it. 18's held. Do I need a motion to hold? What, I need a roll call? All right, I need a motion to hold, and I need a roll call.
Toman will make a motion to hold, item 18.
Rahalan, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Vicavich.
Aye.
Rahalan.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 21 is a consideration of ordinance number 2812, repealing and recreating various sections of the municipal code relating to polling place locations for the City of Oak Creek, 4th and 5th Districts. Are you speaking to this?
No, I'm gonna ask Melissa to, only because she kind of found another chapter in the code that needed to be addressed.
Sure, thanks, Mark. Actually, I would give the credit to the council's office. In reviewing the update from the last matter that was before council that included adjustment to the armory as a polling location, this is an ordinance being brought before you to update the polling place locations for a different subsection of the code, actually multiple specific subsections. So, this is literally an update current with all of the polling place locations in the city for the various wards. Actually, it's wards 10 through 15. It's a cleanup ordinance.
Any questions about this change that we will communicate in our various forms of communication to all of our residents, including a mailer?
Yeah, so, this ordinance is strictly cleaning up. It is a maintenance item. The ordinance that was passed previously to changes polling place, that communication has gone out in letter format to every registered voter within District 4. That is nothing additional.
Okay, good.
Justin, can you just, I see, District 5 is under, any change to my, or is it just?
Well, sir, no change. Simply a maintenance.
Motion on 21.
Gail, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Gail will move to approve ordinance 2812, repealing and recreating sections 2.07 sub A, sub 10 sub B, 2.07 sub A sub 11 sub B, 2.07 sub A sub 12 sub B, 2.07 sub A sub 13 sub B, 2.07 sub A sub 14 sub B, and 2.07 sub A sub 15 sub B of the municipal code relating to polling place locations for the City of Oak Creek.
Toman, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Rahalan.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Vicavich.
Aye.
Item 22 is a motion to approve the June 29 vendor summary report in the amount of $557,588.85. Any preface?
Simply, this is based on the resolution for not having earlier in July.
Okay, questions? Motion.
Item 22, Gail will move to approve the June 29, 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $557,588.85. Kirkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Vicavich.
Aye.
Rahalan.
Aye.
Item 23 is a motion to approve the July 13, 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $638,015.38. Any additional questions or comments? Motion.
Gail will move to approve the 2000, July 13, 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $638,015.38. Kirkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Vicavich.
Aye.
Rahalan.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 24 is under engineering, a motion entered into a contract with Community Design Group for the development and preparation of Safe Routes to School Action Plan for a lump sum fee of $57,702.84, project number 16027. Mike Simmons?
On May of this year, council approved, authorized engineering to enter into negotiations with Community Design Group. They were the recommended firm to work with for this, for this action. We had previously secured funding for 80% up to $48,000 maximum reimbursement for this effort. So, in essence, in the end, we will have a Safe Routes to School Action Plan, about $12,000 outlaid on the, on the, of city funds, outlaid on the effort once the reimbursement is received. So, if we are authorized to proceed, we would have the contract signed and, and basically enlist their help getting this plan going immediately, which would be assembling a, a team, and then just get the effort underway, which is, that's fairly extensive. We, our team would, would have the school district involved. It would be primarily me and Matt Sullivan from, from the engineering department. We would probably try to get a citizen or two involved, maybe an elected official on this team, and then just, just get underway. But basically, it's, it's getting stakeholders involved, it's getting the, the school district involved, and, you know, identifying some of these safe routes, some of these projects, and getting buy-in, getting consensus. Once the plan is completed, and the schedule that they have presented has us completing this by May of next year. And then, of course, we've got a plan, and this plan, we expect, will help us to get some funding applications in to help us fund some of these projects.
Questions from the council?
Like, two things. You gonna reach out to folks who've been, you know, concerned about these issues, obviously, for citizen engagement, right?
Yes, yep, we have a few people in mind.
Okay. And then, I mean, in the big picture, what do we expect to get in, from, out of this in terms of, you know, what's the scale of what we anticipate they're gonna suggest we do? Miles or hundreds of yards of sidewalk, or?
Yeah, this won't be miles, you know, and I, I envision us finding, I would hope that we would have maybe five or six plans identified.
We're gonna look, probably.
Projects identified.
School district neighborhoods where, you know, close.
Absolutely, yeah, the, the, all the elementary schools and the middle schools.
And, and it strictly would be sidewalks, right? You know, Dan had long talked about
It, it could be sidewalks, it could be.
The crossing at 13th Street by West Middle School is an issue.
Yeah, right, yeah. Safer crossings, it could be maybe a little pavement widening, and then a striped shared lane.
So, do you have like a top 10 list for these things, or?
We've got a couple areas in mind, like, like Alderman Gail said, you know, the, the West Middle School crossing and.
That's the one that's mentioned a lot.
You know, this, this started, if I recall correctly, this started with, you know, the inquiry of Shepherd Avenue, where, where people were looking for, you know, a route all that residential, south of Oakwood, is getting to East Middle School, you know. So, yeah, we, we've got some areas in mind. We, we have some other areas that we, that we figured would make that list, but we've already kind of tested those out, and we know that it probably would not be well received. That's part of that, all of that stakeholder buy-in. So, we will have public informational meetings, we will present some options, and we expect some to just be, you know, basically, no, we don't want that in, in our area, and then, okay, we, we look elsewhere. Hope to identify many options.
Anybody else? Motion on 24.
Kirkowski will make a motion to enter into a contract with Community Design Group for the development and preparation of Safe Routes to School Action Plan for a lump sum fee of $57,702.84, project number 16027.
Vicavich, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Vicavich.
Aye.
Rahalan.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Moving to licensing, I'll hand it off to Alderman Kirkowski.
License committee did not meet prior to the meeting. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Item 28, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the 12 individuals listed on the agenda. Favorable background reports were received.
Rahalan, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Vicavich.
Aye.
Rahalan.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And just, just, you know, I got a public comment form on this one, so go ahead and read it and.
Oh, for 29?
Yeah.
Okay. Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a temporary Class B beer license with a waiver of fees. The Jill Lininger, agent on behalf of the Oak Creek Public Library Foundation, Inc., for a one-day Hogwarts reunion event to be held on July 29, 2016.
Mr. Deggler.
Arden Deggler, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I am shocked at this proposal. Why? I can't even get a cup of coffee in the civic center, and now, we're gonna provide something that competes with all the other places that we have around here. I see a big sign as I come down on Howell and Drexel of a business that we're going to compete with on the library? This, this is not thought out properly, because are we setting a standard for our schools, for our children, for our people, that this type of consumption is going to be promoted in every manner in our civic center without cost? I, I, I don't understand it. What we, what we really need is a collective old coffee cart that would compete with all this stuff that's going on in the, in the parks. So, I, and especially, especially with a library with trying to raise money through this type of activity, where we have just found out that the Russians won't be allowed to, to compete because they're, they are drugged. Are we starting this already in our city? I hope not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I just want to say that several years ago, Martin Luther High School had a, had a fish dinner fundraiser, and we had beer there, and, you know, walking down the school hallways with a cup of beer was kind of weird. But it raised money, and it was a lot of fun, and it was a one-time event, and so, I just, I'm gonna put on my best Harry Potter glasses.
Jerry or Jill, briefly, is this out of the ordinary in what we do for our in-house stuff?
No, and you see, you see it's the Library Foundation, and so, it's part of a fundraising effort, and I think that this allows us to have the beverages as part of those foundation events that are, are primarily fundraising.
Don't muck it up.
I would just second that.
There you go.
The alcohol is actually donating, is being donated, and is being, in order to come to this event, it, we, we're looking for unique ways to engage people in our fundraising efforts, and so, the alcohol is being donated by MKE Brewing, and so, with a 20, everyone will be purchasing a $20 ticket, it's a $20 admission ticket, and then you will get two of their sample beers, so we won't actually be selling it.
I applaud you for finding different ways to raise money.
Thank you very much. And we, we already actually sold out, the event has been sold out, so.
It's a tremendous success already, so.
Yeah.
Great job.
Thanks.
Uh, motion on that.
There is a motion.
Was it seconded?
No.
Need a second.
Second.
Roll call. Thanks for.
Alderman Rahalan.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Vicavich.
Aye.
Item 30, oh, Steve, okay.
Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a temporary Class B beer, beer and wine license with a waiver of fees to Alan Hobbs, agent on behalf of the Oak Creek OJs, for the 49th Annual Softball Tourney to be held on August 6th and 7th, 2016. Rain dates, August 13th and 14th, 2016.
Rahalan, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Vicavich.
Aye.
Rahalan.
Aye.
Who do you want?
Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a temporary Class B beer and wine license with a waiver of fees to Scott Koenig, agent on behalf of the Oak Creek Lions Club, for the Oak Creek Lions Festival to be held on September 2nd through 9th.
Rahalan, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Vicavich.
Aye.
Rahalan.
Aye.
Toman.
Epstein.
32 is interesting.
Yes. Kirkowski will make a motion to grant an original Class B combination license to Kevin Lasousa, agent on behalf of Mike Lasousa's 8955 South 5th Avenue, with issuance subject to payment of fees due and final departmental approvals.
Rahalan, a second.
Can I have another question? Is there a date for reopening that?
Not that I'm aware of at this time.
What's going on, or does anybody know?
I don't know.
Just wondering.
We don't have a lot of information on it, but there is a request for, that's what we're, could be good news. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Vicavich.
Aye.
Rahalan.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item 33 is a motion to convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19851E to discuss a proposed exchange agreement between the City of Oak Creek and 5th Property LLC. Alderman Gail.
Mr. Mayor? Before we go into a closed session.
Oh, yeah, you wanted to say something.
Okay, I just want to make these comments before we go into a closed session, because most everybody will be gone when we come back, I'm sure. I just want to let folks know that Oak Creek Little League, the senior boys team, won the district and state championship. And we should be proud of these, these, these guys, and they're heading to the regional tournament in Peru in Oglesby, Illinois next week. Not to be outdone, the major girls softball team won the district and state championship, and they are heading to the regional tournament in Indianapolis, Indiana next week. And our neighbors to the east, the South Milwaukee Little League Intermediate Boys Baseball Team won the district and state championship, and they head to the regional tournament in Kalamazoo at the end of this week. And I just want to point out that if those teams win those regional tournaments, and they advance to the respective World Series, the senior boys will go to Bangor, Maine, the major girls softball, Portland, Oregon, and the intermediate baseball team will go to Livermore, California. So, we've done pretty good locally here, and I want to share that.
And since you're talking baseball, good luck to the Oak Creek Knights, who are at the state tournament on Friday in the state summer baseball playoffs. Alderman Gail.
Gail moves to convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.85 sub 1 sub E to discuss a proposed exchange agreement between the City of Oak Creek and 5th Property LLC.
Kirkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Vicavich.
Aye.
Rahalan.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
I'm not going to close session. Once we come back, we'll turn the cameras back on and go back into open.
Make some motions, we can convene in an open session. Thank you.
Yeah, are you sure you're only?
Did we get a second?
Yeah.
I didn't.
I seconded it.
Toman, seconds, roll call.
Alderman Rahalan.
Aye.